As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the May 13th, 2021 regular city council meeting to order. All right, the first item on the agenda, I would like to remind everyone, if you can please wear your mask, even though apparently the CDC has relaxed the wearing of masks, there is still a state order. So when you're in and out of the chambers, I will ask that you please wear your mask and recognize proper social distancing. And also, we have hand sanitizer outside the entrance of the chambers as well as by the podium. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to do so, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the invocation, moment of silence. And tonight, that invocation or moment of silence will be given by Councilor Mead.
Thank you. On tonight's regular meeting agenda, we have four public hearings. On April 8th, 2021, the public had the legal right to phone in their comments during public hearings as well as during matters from the public. The ability for citizens to participate in local government in this 21st century manner was enabled by the expenditure of nearly $200,000 of taxpayer money to improve the audio and visual technology in the Rita S. Wilson Council chambers. On April 8th, that right was taken away. Tonight, city council could have acted to reinstate public phone-in comments without further delay. They chose not to. Tonight, city council acted to continue to deny citizens their right to participate by failing to act. There's been a well-organized effort of Stanton citizens who have protested the limitation of their right to participate in their government. Many are here tonight. They've come in peace. They've stormed City Hall with only signs, not guns. They've come in spite of physical hardship and inconvenience to their families. They have given up hours of their time to keep this issue on the front burner. Next to voting, I think there is no nobler action a sitter citizen can take than to voice their protest of the actions of their government. For these citizens, I'd like to ask for a moment for the silence. Thank you all.
All right, the next item is the mayor's report. The first item I would like to discuss, I visited Ware Elementary School and I was able to spend some time with my pen pal. She was kind enough to draw a portrait of me and she presented that to me. So it was very exciting to be able to have a pen pal throughout the year. It gave, this past year with the pandemic, it just made it a little bit more bearable and just a little bit nicer. The next item, if you haven't heard, which I'm sure just about everybody has heard, the exciting news, the EPA Communitywide Brownsfield Assessment Grant was awarded to Stanton's West End. This is very exciting for Stanton's West End because this means $300,000 in grant money that will be focused on the West End. So this is just phenomenal. We've worked on this for years. And so I'm just so pleased that this finally came to pass. And I am very excited that our city staff was able to see this through. So thank you to the city staff. The next item, I would like to mention that Senator Kane came to visit the city of Stanton and Councilor Dole, as well as myself, had the opportunity to meet with him in chambers. And he reviewed the American Rescue Plan. And he was very hopeful that we would receive close to $13 million, which it appears, Ms. Beauregard, that we will be receiving almost that amount.
Right, 12.9.
About as close as you can get.
As close as you can get, Sam.
All right, let's see, quite a few things going on. So several of us, Vice Mayor Robertson, Councilor Mead, and myself attended Habitat for Humanity ceremony in which they played, they placed the first modular home, which is going to be a new program initiated by Habitat. And we're very excited that Habitat has found a way to provide affordable housing for our citizens. And the next item is concerning the Mongolia relationship that the city of Stanton has. And I'm going to read a statement because they will be listening to the work session meeting as well as the regular meeting and their future meeting. Leaders Advancing Democracy: Mongolia. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge some special participants this evening. These guests are from Mongolia and therefore in a vastly different time zone. So they won't be participating in real time, but instead will be watching this meeting at a later date when I will join them for a discussion. They are from Leaders Advancing Democracy, or LED, which provides participants with leadership training and civic engagement skills. In former years, as part of their training, they have visited Virginia and Washington DC through exchanges organized in partnerships with the University of Virginia Center for Politics. These visits have included joining us for council meetings here in City Hall. All fellows who participated in the program are highly engaged professionals from across Mongolia and work in fields connected to poverty alleviation and unemployment, transparency and anti-corruption, and the environment and urbanization. The fellows' time with the UVA Center for Politics includes participation in workshops, speaker sessions, and site visits, all done virtually this year, with the intention of providing enhanced skills, these fields, and ultimately, a springboard for the fellows' current and future professional activities. Since January 2017, four cohorts from across Mongolia have participated in these two-week exchanges. While the program was set up to end in 2020, the global pandemic delayed the fifth and final group. And while they won't be with us in person, it is my pleasure to acknowledge their participation in the program during the meeting tonight. Again, thank you so much for joining us. Congratulations on your participation in Leaders Advancing Democracy and best of luck as you continue to make significant positive impacts in your communities and your nation. All right, that's it under the mayor's report. Are there any additional items by members of council? Vice Mayor Robertson.
All right, I'll say, and I'm sure I've said, a lot of people have heard, it was a big announcement today by the President of the United States and the CDC Director. Effective immediately, if you are a vaccinated person, and that means your second shot, or if you get Johnson &amp; Johnson, two weeks after, if you're outside, you do not have to wear a mask. If you're inside, you do not have to wear a mask. The stipulations to that are, of course, hospitalizations in the hospital still applies. If you're on a plane, it applies. If you're on a bus, it applies. If you're on a train, it applies. You have to wear a mask if you're on those close quarters. Also, at the hospital today, they called me and I couldn't. I said I couldn't do it this afternoon, but the hospital started vaccinating 12-year-olds up to, 12 to 15, I believe it was. The CDC said it was okay to do that with the Pfizer vaccine and the hospital started it today. So any of those that want to get their children vaccinated and feel so inclined, please go online and make that appointment. And like I said, because of the new CDC recommendation and the President of the United States, I ask you, please give it thought. If you, this is the whole reason, these vaccinations, these vaccines, they originally came out, they were supposed to be 95% effective. Real-world numbers are 99.2% effective. We don't have vaccines that good. It's amazing. So, you know, this is the whole reason that this, it's really important. If you get vaccinated, you can get rid of these dead blasted things. So please give it some thought. If you're so inclined, please get vaccinated so we can get rid of these sooner than later. And hopefully, we can reach that herd immunity. And if you don't, if you don't believe in it, that's all right. It's all right. It's your right as an American citizen, but just give it some thought.
Any additional, Councilor Mead.
Yes, I just wanted to add to the comments on the Habitat for Humanity project that we visited this week, that what Habitat is creating there is a revitalized neighborhood. It's not, they're just not, they're not just putting up houses. You could stand in the street, there'll be sidewalks, there'll be, there are porches on those homes. People will be able to sit out in their porch and wave to their neighbor. So what Habitat is doing is creating a revitalized neighborhood with those homes that they're building. It's the kind of thing that we'd like to see throughout the city where we have inadequate housing, where we have insufficient workforce housing. Habitat can, has a product that would be very suitable for starting families, for aging in place. So I can't say enough positive about it. And if you haven't seen it, it's just almost a miracle to see these houses on, I think it's Stafford Street and Johnson, but I could be wrong about that. So I would encourage you to drive by and look. You'll just be amazed. So thank you.
It is quite nice. All right, any additional comments?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilor Dole.
I would like to send out a huge thank you to one of our local environmental groups, Shenador Green, for their efforts to plant one tree for every student in our school system in the city of Stanton. They hit the 2,000 mark by planting a tree at Dixon. And they've been blessed with another donation of 130 more trees. So they're having some planting parties. Check out their Facebook page and they'll give you locations and times this weekend. They need volunteers.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Oaks.
Oh, Chancellor Darby.
I just would like to say a few words and thank the VFW Local Post 2216. You know, they do so much for our community. They give a lot to various charitable organizations. And just to give a shout out to them as we approach especially Memorial Day. And so I wanted to say that.
Thank you. And now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 22nd, 2021. Okay, Councilor Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting. I mean, I'm sorry, I approved the work session and regular meeting agenda as presented.
The minutes?
Minutes.
Minutes, okay. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the special call meeting on May 6th, 2021. Councilor Holmes.
I don't have it here. Wait a minute.
Oh, I don't either.
I'd like to approve the work session and the six special call meeting. For, sir, for.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the special call meeting minutes of May 6th, 2021. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second it.
All right, Councilman Claffey has seconded. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Mead.
I was absent for that meeting, so I won't be.
All right. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That moves us into the regular meeting, which is item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Mary Baldwin University for a special use permit for 221 North Market Street to allow for the conversion of an existing building to student housing. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Oaks, city council members. As the mayor noted, Mary Baldwin University has submitted an application for a special use permit to convert an existing building located at 221 North Market Street to student housing. The property is on HE1, Higher Education District, which requires a special use permit if it adjoins residential property or within 75 feet of a public street. This property is at the intersection of North Market and Prospect Streets. It's on the edge of the Mary Baldwin University campus. It is currently used as administrative offices. The university is proposing to convert this to student rental. It's about 3,000 square feet. It would have five bedrooms and have 10 people reside at that location. In the briefing packet, there are various maps, including one that shows the current uses in the area. And as I previously noted, this is on the edge of the university. So on one side of the street, it's all Mary Baldwin University uses, including a parking lot behind it. On the other side of the streets, it's zone R4 High Density Residential District. And there's a mixture of single-family and multifamily dwellings across the street from this property. The Conference of Plan 2018 to 2040 designates this area as public slash semi-public, which is consistent with the proposed use of this property. Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on April 15th, 2021, and considered the request during the public hearing. No one spoke in opposition to the request. However, prior, just prior to the commission meeting, the commission received two emails from property owners across the street from this. And the commission did consider their concerns. And their concerns basically were traffic, speed of traffic, parking, and noise. The Plan Commission did discuss those items. They thought that they could be addressed through conditions and through current city code requirements such as noise ordinance. And that area requires a parking permit. And so it's limited, you know, to one or two hours if you don't have a parking permit. So after the conclusion of that public hearing and that discussion, the Plan Commission on a five to zero vote unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. Number one, the number of students permitted to be housed at 221 North Market Street shall not exceed 10. Two, all residents of the property shall have a Mary Baldwin University parking permit and must be required by the university to park on campus. This parking restriction shall be monitored and enforced by Mary Baldwin University. Number three, a building permit is required for change in use under Unified Statewide Building Code. And four, failure to comply with any of these conditions will result in immediate revocation of the special use permit. I'd be glad to take any questions the council has at this time or after you conduct a public hearing. There are several representatives of the university here.
Great. Councilor Claffey.
Rodney, is there any onsite parking for this location?
It would be my understanding that they would utilize the large parking area behind it. I do not believe there's any onsite.
Madam Mayor. Councilor Mead. You had your hand up?
No.
Okay. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Rodney, let me just make sure I understand. On this one page here, it talks, you said it would be limited to 10, but I'm looking at first level, second level, I'm trying to understand. It says double, double, double lounge, double, double. Never mind. I thought there was a study. Okay, so that's, so yeah, 246, I got you. Yep, we're good. 10 and then a study and a lounge. All right, just answer my own question.
Good.
Councilor Darby.
Mr. Rhodes, after the Plan Commission meeting, have you heard anything else from the citizens who had voiced concern?
Thank you. We included those two emails in your packets. I believe a day or two ago, one of those same property owners' residents asked that those comments be forwarded to council. And of course, we told them that they already had been provided to you, but we have not heard from anyone else since the Plan Commission public hearing. Of course, this public hearing was also advertised. And notices, once again, went out to all adjoining property owners, and that includes everyone across the street.
All right, thank you. We will have a public hearing concerning this matter. I will bang the gavel. And if you are for, please come to the podium and express your views. If you are against, please do the same. And then I'll hit the gavel one more time to close the public hearing out. And at that point, I will entertain a motion. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak?
Hi, representing Mary Baldwin University. And thank you so much for this opportunity and our request for everybody to hear this. I'm Brigadier General Terry Jerk. I'm the commandant of cadets at Mary Baldwin University. I'm also senior advisor to the president. And I have responsibilities for university's facilities. That's why I'm represented in being our vice president for student engagement, Dr. Jeffries and Nick Hall, my chief of operations. If approved, this permit would allow Mary Baldwin University to house students in 221 North Market Street. It's also known as Edmondson House for the first owners of the house. Structure previously was used as office space for our faculty for the College of Education. And we moved those staff offices in September down to the Stanton Innovation Hub because Mary Baldwin really wants to help support that important community project. Converting this building to student residence is essential to accommodate our thoughtfully planned ongoing rise in enrollment. This fall, we plan to welcome 1,000 residential undergraduate students to campus. And we estimate that 750 of those students will live on campus while 250 would be commute. We plan to house 10 students in this five-bedroom house, dedicated parking spaces in Sky 3 parking lot, which is where I park. And my office is next door to this building. And I walk directly from that parking lot, which is, Morgan knows where I walk. And we go down about 50 yards to the house. And so there's dedicated ample parking for those students. In addition, MBU owns two additional properties. We've got our Student Health Center on that side of the street. And then we also have my supply house where all my cadets' uniforms are. We've enjoyed a positive relationship with the residents on that street. I've been there seven years. Personally, I notified several of the residents and left them some MBU logo this week because we've got commencement coming up and we know how busy that street gets. And those that I spoke to indicated support for students. We place tremendous value on our friendly relationship with all of our neighbors. Specifically, I engage with the Market Street neighbors on a daily basis. And we want to ensure that that stays on good terms. Dr. Jeffries Student Engagement works very closely with the residents of the students that are in houses in our neighborhoods. And we want to make sure that the students living in our university-owned properties represent the university to the best as we expect them to. We understand that there are concerns with converting this house to student housing and that it could add some traffic and noise in the evenings. And we support any reasonable measures that the city may suggest with regards to traffic. Furthermore, the students living in Edmondson House will be required to park in that parking lot. And I just want to remind everybody, Mary Baldwin, 1842, and about to hit our 180th anniversary. It's not a significant party culture. And large gatherings, social events are prohibited in the campus residences. Edmondson House residents would follow this rule. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Holmes.
I move that council approve the special use permit for 221 North Market Street with the condition recommended by the Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item B. We will have a public hearing in consideration of a request to rezone 2040 West Beverly Street from B2 to General Business District to I1 Light Industrial District conditional. Mr. Rosenberg.
Mr. Rhodes has this one as well.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This request tonight for this rezoning is for 2040 West Beverly Street from B2 General Business to I1 Light Industrial Conditional. The stated purpose of this request is convert the existing buildings on the property to climate-controlled self-storage units and to construct new storage buildings in that area that is currently a parking lot. In the B2 General Business District, storage is not a permitted use. Therefore, the applicant has applied for this rezoning to industrial to be as the principal use, storage would be the principal use. The property is approximately nine and three-quarters acres. It's at the intersection of West Beverly Street and Grubert Avenue. And obviously, it's known as Chestnut Hills Shopping Center. It was developed in 1971. However, all the national retailers have moved out within the past decade. It's over 90,000 square feet of buildings. There's two large buildings on the property. The applicant is proposing to leave the property in the front, the fronts on West Beverly, almost exactly one acre. To leave that as B2 General Business District, which would be appropriate. And so you have a uniform street frontage with commercial development. But then he would like to rezone the remainder, nearly nine acres, to Light Industrial Conditional. After initial review of the application over a month ago, the staff worked with the developer to discuss about the possible uses that could go in the Light Industrial District and what kind of impact they could have on the community. Therefore, the applicant voluntarily submitted some proffers, which would limit the uses permitted on the property, specifically prohibiting the development of site for adult business uses and all of the outside storage uses and many of the more intensive manufacturing uses. and many of the more intensive manufacturing uses. I would note that if this rezoning is approved, the next step for the developer would be to submit a site plan. And going through that process, there would be a requirement that there be a vegetated buffer on basically on all sides of this because it does adjoining lesser intense uses such as commercial and residential on the back, on three sides, actually. I would also note that, as stated in the briefing, that there is a city sewer main that crosses the property. That would be addressed at that point during the site plan review. Because obviously, that would impact where buildings could go and, you know, Public Works would need to retain access to maintain that line. As far as the surrounding uses, our zoning along West Beverly is B two General Business District. However, in the back, it's a mixture of residential, R two low-density and R three medium-density. I would note that most of those properties have been developed. There's about three dozen properties that is on residential that back up to this, and approximately half of those have been developed with single-family dwellings. The Conference of Plan twenty eighteen to twenty forty Future Land Use Map designates this area as business. One of the goals of the Conference of Plans is to promote rehabilitation and conservation through the city by reuse of existing infrastructure and buildings, revitalization of blighted and vacant properties, and redevelopment in older high-density areas. And one of the goals under this objective is to revitalize blighted and vacant properties by creating an inventory to evaluate if zoning changes are needed. Basically, whether or not the zoning of these properties are impeding redevelopment of it. And also should address crime and require absent landlords to maintain deteriorating properties. And while the conference plan supports the revitalization of light and vacant buildings, the redevelopment must be done in a manner which is appropriate for the area. The proposed proffers would limit some of the potential impacts on the surrounding residential uses. However, the rezoning request is not consistent with the future land use map of the Conference of Plan or the intent of the Light Industrial District, and is not compatible with the surrounding residential uses. At the planning commission's meeting on April fifteen, twenty twenty-one, no one spoke in opposition to the request. And on a five-to-zero vote on the basis that the request would not serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, and general welfare and good zoning practice, the planning commission unanimously recommended denial of the request. And since that time, the developer listened to some of the comments from the planning commission and has attempted to address some of those concerns by providing additional proffers. And those came in this week. I believe you received those a few days ago. And they basically eliminate almost all manufacturing uses of the property if this was zoned to industrial conditional. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct a public hearing.
All right. Counselor Claffey.
Rodney, in your background, you state that no potential developer of the project has been identified at this time?
Yes, sir. No one has come to the planning and zoning office and submitted, you know, conceptual plan, a site plan to develop this for the proposed use, the self-storage units. I believe the developer could probably better answer that question for you, though, as far as what contacts he's had with potential developers of that.
Is council okay if the developer approaches the microphone to answer?
Absolutely.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I had a few things that I wanted to comment on, if I can see through my glasses. I'd like to make one correction about self-storage. I think the drawing that was submitted shows it was a conceptual plan for self-storage. Self-storage could also mean utilizing the ninety thousand square feet inside the ninety thousand square feet for storage. That would include the storage of antique cars and other, you know, and I've been approached for people who want to do exotic car storage. So it's not simply self-storage as you might see little cubicles sitting around. We may not even utilize the parking lot for those cubicles. It's just the ninety thousand square feet. It's what we do with the inside of that ninety thousand square feet. As far as the development is concerned, we do own the property, and we are seeking financing and/or a partner to help us do that. As I understand it, we have to come before the board with our final drawings and final plans. To me, that's where the restrictions get even more severe. I'd like to make just a couple of comments that I prepared, if I may. I think he did a great job, and I just want to dovetail on a few things. We think an alternate development of this property really is intended because it's functionally obsolete. I will tell you, for the last ten years, we have looked for retail. We've looked for all kinds of different uses. Some of you don't know, but we actually had a contract from Walmart for a marketplace. They did a layout for a gas station. They did it for the food store. And they determined it was just not enough income in that area to go forward. Marketplaces have actually not done well with Walmart, so we were not surprised. The Planning Commission, there were some comments made on April fifteenth. That, it seemed to be positive, if I could say, and I don't want to repeat the whole process. The ordinance as presented today is actually less than one page. He's right. We whittled it down to eliminate manufacturing and any other objectional things. It's basically nothing more than storage with the retail. The idea is that the retail in the front with the smaller shops would shield any objectional things in the rear, although the frontage or the storefronts could be modified to look obviously a lot better than they are now. We have fought and fought and fought with homeless people in the back of those stores for a number of years. And the roof is caving in on one of the buildings, and we just simply can't afford to keep it up. And I don't mean to keep going over, but the planning meeting, there was no objection. There was no calls. There was no nothing. So I'd like to see this go forward on what's best for the property. And again, some of those ideas that were brought forward can be further refined and restricted as we go forward with the site plan review. I will tell you that someone also mentioned that the YMCA had been interested in the property, and I can confirm that. Someone also mentioned that they may have talked to a member of the YMCA within the last ten days and said that they were still interested. If you're interested, here is a letter from the YMCA dated yesterday that says they are no longer interested. I'd be happy to really answer any other questions you may have at this point.
Does council have any questions? Counselor Mead.
Mr. Harding, are you planning to do that general business development in front of the property?
Well, as I said earlier, we have a financing source. We're also looking for a partner. So the answer is yes.
Contingent on financing and finding a partner?
Well, let me explain the retail aspect to this and the difficulty over the years. The property needs a lot of work. We got a call from a small company that says we'd like five thousand square feet. Well, we don't have it, but we could chop up the space. Oh, but we only want to rent three thousand feet for three years. We can't afford to put on a three hundred thousand dollar roof or tenant for three years. It may or may not be there.
I want to be clear. I'm talking about that portion of the property that you're not intending to rezone. Are you intending? Do you have plans to develop that front piece?
If we have the zoning, if this goes forward, that is set up to house small retail spaces, yes.
Any additional questions? Vice Mayor Robertson.
Joe, Mr. Harding, did I understand, I think Rodney talked about, you said vegetation, but I mean, I actually had a gentleman approach me today and said it would be nice maybe if there was some green space added. Maybe that trees, whatever, so that when coming down Grubert, you weren't faced, but I said if you put the retail space there, but it was just, I'm just saying, green space or trees, whatever, just to kind of beautify that area.
Well, traditionally, we like to use Leland cypress or that because they're fast-growing and they give a lot of greenery. I'm not exactly sure the space that you're talking about.
It was just, it was a comment from a person who said.
But I think the ordinance will take care of that.
And one other thing, and I can't say right now, but I did have a gentleman, a possible future. There's a very large winery in this area that's looking for a large, large space of climate control, which I just found out this afternoon.
I would be delighted to talk with him.
I thought you would.
That would be a very, very good match.
But anyway.
Does it mean for that, Mr. Rhodes, for a winery that the vice mayor spoke of? Of course, this is, it sounds hypothetical at this point.
It is. It's hypothetical. It just said that they were looking.
Is this for, just for storage or is this for production? No, no storage. Climate control. That's a good match. Yeah.
Mr. Harding, so what you're saying is that the buildings would be considered manufacturing storage? Is that how it would be labeled?
No, we.
All right, can you explain that to me?
The ordinance, the original ordinance, help me out here. The original ordinance does talk about manufacturing of certain types of goods.
Okay.
Because there were objections along the path, we eliminated any discussion or any language that had to do with manufacturing.
Okay.
Believe it or not, that's a little contradictory because when Kroger was there, they manufactured in their bakery and they did meat cutting in the back, so. But we did eliminate any language it has to do with manufacturing because that seemed to be objectionable.
Okay. But the two buildings, the old Hex building and the old Big Lots building,
Right.
Those are the two buildings that you're referring to as far as the storage?
Correct.
Okay. The buildings, from my understanding, are in poor condition.
Very poor.
Okay. All right. I have a question for Mr. Rhodes. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harding. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Harding? Okay.
Rodney, could you ask this green space thing you were?
Yes, Vice Mayor. If this property is redeveloped, industrial in the back, commercial in the front, it would require a site plan, and the site plan requires landscaping, not just for the buffer to shield the homes from the storage units, but there's required landscaping within the parking lots along the frontage of the street. So yes, sir, that would have to meet the city's standards.
I don't know if you would be able to answer this or if, Mr. Rosenberg, if you would be in a better position to answer this question. But since the West End received the Brownsfield Grant and Chestnut Hills was listed as one of the properties that would benefit from the three hundred thousand, will rezoning affect the Brownsfield Grant?
I don't have a certain answer to that question, Mayor Oaks. I don't believe that it would, but we'll need to confirm that. The, I was going to get into this in some detail during matters from the city manager, but the the grant funds totaling three hundred thousand dollars are to be used largely for purposes of performing Phase One or to be used for purposes of conducting environmental site assessments on properties in the West End. And so Chestnut Hills Shopping Center is one of those properties that's been identified to be the subject of one of the grant-funded environmental site assessments. And so I don't know if the property was rezoned, whether that would affect the ability to use funds for an assessment of that specific property. I don't think it would, but I don't know that with certainty, nor do I know whether if that property became ineligible for the use of those funds in that manner, whether we could substitute another property in that part of the city in its place. So we can get the answers to those questions and provide them to council.
Mr. Rhodes, you said that there were changes to the application, proffers, as you put it, that came in this past week?
We got these.
Yes. I'd like clarification for the public.
I'm sure. Yeah, this past week, there were concerns by some of the commissioners that they didn't. Self-storage is a very low-intense use in an industrial district. But there's lots of uses that would generate more traffic, noise, you know, heavy truck traffic, you know. You could have a manufacturing business that's operating twenty-four-seven. So there was certainly some concerns about what could go there with the rezoning down the road if someone else wanted to develop for a different purpose. So based on that, the applicant came back and he eliminated the manufacturer compounding, processing, packaging, or treatment of such products as bakery goods, candy, cosmetics, dairy products, drugs, perfumes, pharmaceuticals, perfume, toiletries and food products, and also the manufacturer compounding, assembly, or treatment of articles of merchandise from the following previously prepared materials: aluminum, bone, cellophane, canvas, cloth, cork, feathers, felt, fiber, fur, glass, hair, horn, leather, paper, plastics, precious or semi-precious metals or stones, shell, rubber, textiles, tin, iron, steel, wood, yarn, yarn and paint not involving a boiling process. So basically, all manufacturing uses have been eliminated except for the manufacture of musical instruments, toys, novelties, and rubber and metal stamps.
But the intent is to have climate-controlled self-storage that's indoors. Is that the intent? Okay. Are there any additional questions? Counselor Darby.
Mr. Rhodes, you may have said this, but if you could just, you said that no one spoke at the planning commission meeting. No one spoke against this, right?
That is correct. As we do with any public hearing, we place notices to. public hearing, we place notices to consecutive weeks in the local paper, and we also send out notices to every adjoining property owner. In this case, that was over three dozen property owners. We did not hear any response from that. Also, for tonight's public hearing, we did the same thing, announcements in the paper and and letters to all the adjoining property owners. The planning office has not received any direct communications from the public, is my understanding. I've seen some of the emails that have been circulated around that went directly to council members this week.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that's all the questions. I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Holmes.
Around these, these storage units aren't, isn't it? Isn't there a lot more like larceny, like breaking and entering goes on around those kind of storage units? I do not have any information on that. I guess it kind of depends on if there's sufficient lighting, is there, what kind of security you have. But I'm not, I don't have any documentation on that.
Councilor Mead.
I asked that question of Chief Williams, and he provided data that from January 2015 to the present on several of the larger self-storage facilities. One nearby has 700 units with 30 buildings. They've had, over that period of time, 54, well, they've had 114 calls to that particular property. Another property on Spring Hill, they've had 76 calls during that period of time. Another property on National, they've had 28 calls during that period of time. For any of these, I don't know how long these folks have been in business, with the exception of the first one. They've been in business for many years in that area. So I think, I think, and most of these calls are larceny, citizen calls for service, suspicious persons, that's a very frequent one. I'm assuming that that would be, I don't know what suspicious persons would be, but so there have been, I think, a fairly significant number of calls to our police department.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you. I am going to bang the gavel and I'll open up the public hearing. You can speak for or against this measure. And then once I hit the gavel, that'll close out the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. With that, the public hearing is now open. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Brown and I own a home on North Waverly Street.
Deborah, I'm going to interrupt you for one moment. Please forgive me. My apologies to the audience. For a public hearing, you do have five minutes to speak. If you can state your name and your address, forgive me, you may start over.
Okay. My name is Deborah Brown. I do own a home on North Waverly Street. Obviously, I do not live at the vicinity of the subject property, but I am here to speak out against the proposal. The line of, my line of sight from my kitchen window is to that heat island known as Chestnut Hill Shopping Center. Now, in a recent West Side survey, many suggestions were given about what to do with the West Side, and I know suggestions were given about that specific property. In my mind's eye, I would like to see a park, someplace where children and families can go and enjoy themselves on the West Side, your blue collar, working class neighborhood. Now, Mr. Harding lamented in the news leader recently about the decreased property value. Okay. But what about the decrease, the potential for decreased property values to the surrounding properties? And there's a proposal for a vegetative buffer. Well, I'm sorry, but as an absentee landlord, he can't even mow his grass out front. So basically, I'm sorry, Mr. Harding, but you don't live here. We do. Light on industry should be out of residential areas altogether. It should be in areas of the municipality where there is better access, not only to the outer belt, but to I-81. And keep it a nice residential area. The West Side residents are proud of their properties. And they put a lot of blood, sweat, and I know tears into their homes and their properties. So please do not vote for this. It sounds like a pie in the sky dream. There's nothing concrete about what he's proposed. And as a West Side resident, I love it. And all I ask is you to take into some consideration for what the survey told you about improving the West Side. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Cindy Connors and I live at 106A Skyline Avenue, which I too can see that property from where I live because I'm up the hill just a little bit, but I'm only a couple of blocks from that property. And to be honest, had I somehow I missed the the notice of the public hearing and the planning commissioner, I would have been there had I known about it. I did attend the meeting of the West End Committee the last time, and we went over extensively the survey results. And as you know, no one said, please, can we have a storage unit in our neighborhood and that plan? And I really believe that we should let that committee and the city council and the planning commission have a comprehensive plan for the West End, not a willy-nilly piecemeal, rezone this, rezone that, decide to do this. It's really important to have a strategic plan in the West End. I too really love living there. I actually purchased the house next door, which had been vacant and derelict for over a year because I love the West End and my neighborhood so much that I wanted to revitalize this home and have a family or someone be able to live in a comfortable and safe home. So I'm willing to contribute to the neighborhood. I'm really passionate about it. There's, there's no need for the the storage unit, doesn't fill any community need. I would love, love the idea about a park because families can use it or a place that would provide jobs would be excellent for the West End so that we would have the income there to support businesses. I don't believe storage units are safe places and council and me gave us some evidence to that. I know that they, that I used to live near one in Fairfax County and the police were, you could see the lights of the police there on a constant, almost constant basis. So we need a positive, safe thing to go in there, and we need a strategic plan for the West End. And please do not rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and members of the city council. My name is Ingrid Blanton. I live at 217 North Madison Street. And I also ask that you follow the recommendation of the planning commission to deny this zoning request. We heard earlier this evening about the $300,000 Brownfields grant for the West End. It was celebrated, as it should be, as a big step toward revitalizing the West End. So congratulations are definitely in order there as they were for the great effort of Habitat in revitalizing neighborhoods. This rezoning request runs counter to those commendable efforts. The objective of the comprehensive plan, as we heard, is to revitalize lighted and vacant properties. Storage units do not help us meet that objective. It does not, as the previous speaker said, employ people. It does not become a center for community activity. Such buildings are usually really unattractive, doing nothing to enhance the general appearance of that area, and they often bring down the surrounding property values. So this is really an affront to the neighboring residence residencies. Storage units, by definition, as spaces for holding inanimate objects are a dead zone and do anything but revitalize that area. So again, I ask that you do follow the recommendation of your planning commission and deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Smith. My address is 188 Vista Lane in Stanton. I do not live on the West End, but I have business on the West End, specifically storage. So I'm not worried, I'm not opposed to this because of competition. I'm opposed to it because it's not going to revitalize the West End. Storage does nothing for the community. People won't come to Stanton to store stuff. You don't get business to come in. You don't get people to move into Stanton to store stuff. It doesn't help the city economically, maybe a little bit in property tax. You don't get, not a lot of sales tax. You know, if they sell merchandise, we do, it's not a lot. You don't get, you know, there's no income. You don't employ people. And, I mean, we spend a lot of money working on our property. We probably do two or three roofs a year. We're repaving the road that the city uses to get to the water tower. It's just, it's not a good thing for the West End. You know, probably for the past five years, you've kind of heard a murmur, you know, West End revitalized, and it's getting bigger and bigger. And this is just counter to that. I think it would be kind of a kick in the face to change the plan. So that's, that's why I'm against it.
Hi, my name is Ellen Bowden. I live at 232 East Beverly Street. I've been a commercial and realist, a commercial and residential realtor and owner of a real estate company for 30 years out of my life. My understanding is very often storage buildings are just temporary use and it's an inexpensive way to to increase income on a property. I think if we just celebrated the fact that we got the Brownfields grant, I've been to some of those meetings. There was never a suggestion to revitalize the West End by putting in storage units. And indeed, I believe four of our newest council members ran under the auspices of revitalizing the West End. I agree that it's a dead spot. I understand that it's been vacant. It's not an attractive place. I do believe the owner hasn't maintained the property. I think that's very self-evident. And I also heartily agree with what the zoning folks said. Thank you.
Hi, I am Caitlin Sigmund and I live on North, sorry, 240 North Mad, oh, not there anymore, North Jefferson Street. I am a current business owner in the West End, more towards the downtown. I own a flower shop called Brins Posey. I am, along with all the citizens that have spoken against this for multiple reasons. I have some suggestions that we could, we need to reach out to those community members in the direct vicinity of that storage unit proposed area of the Chestnut Hills area. I believe we could get some more people on the ground and have a survey of what, do more surveys on those people, what they would like to have, maybe throw out some options. And I find that, I believe that nobody's going to be interested in a storage unit. I would just like to second that everyone said that I find them to be risky, do not bring jobs, aren't going to benefit the majority of the citizens. I feel like we have plenty of storage units in this town. We don't have any reason to encourage more consumerism and wasted space. The, he mentioned at one point that they have already an issue with homeless people surrounding the area. I feel like we could look into that very, that statement in itself and see how we can bring something to the community that helps curb that issue on its own, maybe some public housing above retail spaces with this $300,000 grant. I think that we could be putting that into people opening businesses in that area that live in the community. It's, I just believe it's a really bad time to even consider rezoning it in in that case. And lastly, in the condition that it's in currently, it's, there's not really any question why nobody's going to rent the space. If they put, invest the money into fixing the spaces, I find, I believe that it would be taken. People would be happy to rent it and open businesses in the area, especially considering the $300,000 grant that could go towards people opening businesses in the area. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Talins and I live on the West End, 2104 Public Street. And I drive past that place all the time, and so does my girlfriend on her way to work. And it's, if you just got this $300 to revitalize the West End and explore different properties to see how you could make them a little bit better, this is the exact opposite of that. I mean, it is, you're basically wasting the $300,000 you've got by putting storage units there. And I guarantee you that if you have a homeless problem with people around there already, putting storage units there is just going to make it worse. I mean, I have committed crimes near storage units, like when I was young. I mean, it's ridiculous. So it's, it just seems like a complete backward step from where we're trying to go, which is revitalize the West End. And I just bought a house here like a month and a half ago. And I don't want to have to drive past the storage units all the time. And yeah, there's other places to put them. But this is like right in the center of a community, and it is going to make it a completely dead zone. I mean, like, what are you going to get for that? Like, just, and even, I don't know, you can't even plant enough trees to make that attractive. And I bet, like, how many people here live right next to a storage unit? Like, none of us, because that's crappy property value. You know, like, make it, I don't know, something else. And yeah, I think the building is in disrepair and it looks like crap, but it's going to look a lot worse if there's storage units there. So that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Julie Schofield and I live in the West End on Lake Avenue. And I just want to chime in in opposition to rezoning that property, and definitely I'm opposed to putting storage units there. I have to say, I agree with all of the folks who have spoken before me, so I won't go over every single point. But I hope you all also recognize that there are brand new storage units that just got built beyond Montgomery Hall Park on Lacy B Way. Are they full? Do they have a waiting list? Is there a huge demand? That storage area is exactly where storage should be, out of sight, out of mind, easy access. And the last thing I want to see are new storage units on that property in the West End. It seems to me, and I want to acknowledge that I do think there are members of this council who ran on a platform of truly looking at revitalization of the West End. You approve this zoning, this rezoning and put storage units there, you're pretty much telling those of us who live in the West End that you have given up and you don't care about us. Because that's the message that we're going to hear if you put storage units on that property. I would much rather see it bulldozed and turned into a park, a playground, some green space. And frankly, to your point, I'd love to see a winery have a tasting room there where we could all gather and have some social time, not manufacturing, not light industrial. So once again, I just want to say, I associate myself with the comments of the folks who've come before me, and I'm strongly opposed to rezoning this property for light industrial.
Hello. My name is Lance Spardon. I'm the Director of Habitat for Humanity. I do not live in the West End. I live in East Beverly. But I've been asked by seven of our residents to chime in who do live in the West End, who who have voiced their concerns about the proposal of a business by a business owners that have not kept the property in good shape, and they worry about their business practices going forward. They are also, obviously, because I, my relationship is based on on homeownership, they they are also concerned that the opportunity for homeownership, which does prove to make a neighborhood strong, in a community strong to be a part, that that's a lost opportunity there. And on a personal level, I hear a lot of people saying that storage units are dangerous places or the cops are always there. I think that what it comes down to is the character of the individual who owns the property will result in certain outcomes. And and the neighbors that I work with have shared that same concern. That's it.
Thank you, Lance.
Hello, my name is Joanne Tigard and I don't live on the West End anymore, but I've lived But I've lived, I moved to Stanton in 1988. I lived in two different homes on the West End, one that was infested with rats. And then I moved. I do have an investment in the West End, having lived there, having taught at Ware Elementary for many years, and at Shelburne. I, I love the West End. I had, I hate to see the fact that it has become in this, to the state it is. It seems to me that there's so many other uses that that area could be changed into. I was speaking with a friend this afternoon who did not know about this progression, that it may be changed into storage units. This person happens to be a Stanton City Police Dispatcher. When I told this person, they said, oh my, we get so many calls to the storage facilities in the city because people are breaking in frequently. I don't have the numbers, you mentioned them earlier. And they, this person said that they actually have a, a police officer designated to one facility, I believe, every evening, because there are so many break-ins to steal catalytic converters off of big mobile homes or campers, or whatever they're called. And that to me, that a police dispatcher is so concerned and upset at hearing that is cause for concern, number one. But there are so many options. We need to, I think that you all and we as a community need to look at the different options. And, and whether the Brownfields grant will work if this happens. The West End shouldn't be given up on. We have the West End Alliance. We need to love our entire city. It's a beautiful city. It's, it's a wonderful city. People come here from mainly Northern Virginia, but we love them anyway. We got to love everybody, right? And there's so many options. We need to look at all the options, not just take the first thing that's come up. And I'm, I'm feeling for the owner, but let's find something a little better than storage units, please. We love Stanton, and we don't want to give up on any part of it. Every part of Stanton is beautiful and worthwhile. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening, Council. Thank you for having us tonight, and congratulations on the Brownfield Grant. Thank you for such hard work. Looking forward to see where that leads. My name's Aaron Danner. Some of you don't know me. I'm owner at Braden and Van Fosen, Van Fosen Rentals. Most of you know us, but you may not know that we were a family-owned business started by my great-grandfather in 1925. We've been around for 96 years, almost all right there on West Beverly Street. We still handle ironwork and welding, including repairs, including some repairs around the park last year. Thank you for the business. And of course, we have self-storage, less than, less than three quarters of a mile away from this facility. This is, once again, my, my family business. You don't know me well enough, but I'm incredibly proud of my grandfather. I miss him dearly. And I'm incredibly proud of that business, going there every day, and what we do there, what we represent. And I think how we take care of the community around us. We generally put a lot of money and effort, thought into trying to improve our appearance. It's not always been the best. We're, we're pretty active. We, we have a belief, we're believers in the West End. We believe it's going to be right. And we preach that. We've, I'm an active member of Weston Business Association. My brother-in-law is an active member of Habitat for Humanity. We really try to give back to the community as best we can. In regards to Chestnut Hills, I, I can recall a long time ago, me and my sister riding our little bikes down to the Pecs, screwing around for a little while, pretending like we had $5. It's amazing to think that that adorable little version of me in 1985 was looking at the nicest version of that shopping center that I've ever seen. That shopping center has continued to degrade, fall apart, been neglected, clearly neglect. No love, no regard for the surrounding community. As someone mentioned, you can drive out at night, the grass hasn't been mowed this year. Buildings are leaking, and they probably should be condemned. Yet, you know, hearing the owner talk tonight, it's, it's like we can't get retail because the buildings are falling apart. And it's almost like he doesn't understand why the buildings are falling apart, or as if it wasn't his responsibility to take care of it, as if it was someone else's responsibility. I don't, I don't understand that, if I'm not hearing correctly. When we're told things like retail isn't possible, and Family Dollar just left and reopened two blocks away. I, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if not, if retail's possible in the West End, but I'm pretty sure retail's not possible in buildings that have leaks with a 1970 facade and built on a parking lot full of potholes. I think there's a very clear reason why we lost retail in that shopping center. And I think that's just due to the buildings. You guys have got a lot of feedback tonight. All negative. I'm sure you've seen stuff on the web. It's 97% negative. The really only positive thing you can find about this is it's better than nothing. I mean, that's, that's the only, only thing I can find good about this idea. It's better than nothing. But I want to know what it's better than nothing means. I think, I think it's better than nothing is a way we trick ourselves into quitting. I think better than nothing, saying it's better than nothing is knowing that you had a stronger goal and you deserve more, but you're going to call it, call it now and settle. I think it's the reason why people get married to people they shouldn't have. Because they, they said, they said the same thing, it's better than nothing. They gave up. It's the same reason a runner runs, wants to quit 20 miles into a marathon. It's a, it's a trick that our mind plays with us. When you think about passing this or failing this tonight, I want you to think about that thought in your head. And if, if the only thing that is pushing you to do this is it's better than nothing, I want you to ignore it. I want you to go back to the goals that you remembered, that we deserved, and I want you to go back and bat force and fight force. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I actually have a question for Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Mr. Harding, what would happen if this does not pass?
We'd be back to square one. We don't know. The, the only comment I can say is I think most people are a little hung up about small storage units. If we had a winery for storage, climate-controlled storage, we would utilize the buildings as is. I think the zoning, the intention of the zoning, let me put it that way. The intention of the zoning is for, quote, warehousing, not necessarily self-storage. It's just gone, I, I don't know where that came up. I don't know how that we got into the cell, everything talked about negatively is self-storage. The zoning happens to allow self-storage in the same category as warehousing. I think a wine storage climate control is absolutely ideal. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Pete Salins, and I think warehousing and self-storage is pretty much the same, so.
Okay. Go right ahead. I'm trying to be lenient on the time, because the clock's over here, and I'm trying to watch the clock and listen and look at you guys while you speak.
Just real quick. Jason Miles or Morgan Miles Picture Frames and Art Gallery down on the West End. We were downtown for 12 years. We moved to the West End three years ago. Since we've moved there, houses next to us, next to them, next to them, across the street, next to them, have all been renovated. Families are moving into the West End. This does, I'm sorry, this does not bring anybody more to the West End. I strongly oppose this.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Plowman, let's get a clock on this monitor, please. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I, I don't know what I'm about to say is probably going to make Joe happy, or y'all happy either. But I really, there's too many unanswered questions. And unfortunately, the news leader got it wrong. There's more than two choices, and I'm about to go for the third choice. There's just too many, is the Brownfield Grant will be affected? Do we, we don't know what's going to go retail. We don't, the, the Stanton Planning Commission hasn't really had a chance to look at the other proffers that came in just over a few weeks ago, or a week ago, or whatever. So with all that said, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that Stanton City Council refer this matter back to the Stanton, Stanton Planning Commission for the commission's input and comments concerning the proffer made by the applicant after the Planning Commission's April 15, 2021 meeting, and also for Mr. Rosenberg to find out how anything of this would affect the Brownfield Grant.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I second that.
We have a second by Counselor Darby. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counsel, Counselor Dole.
We have certainly heard from the community, both in emails and here tonight, and I'm sure there would have been more if they could have called in. If you, if you actually listen to the people, I heard no one say they wanted any kind of storage on that property. And there, there's a West End Business Alliance, and Billy Vaughn has been working with them. They, and John Glover, they've gotten the flood study completed. They've gotten the Brownfield, Brownfields grant. And we need to not drag this out. There's no reason that we should approve this rezoning. It doesn't help bring in additional revenue. It doesn't create one good job, or even a crummy job. And it doesn't revitalize the West End.
Councilor Mead. I was concerned about the fact that the Planning Commission and the, and our planning department didn't receive any feedback from any of the citizens after sending out nearly 40 letters. So I, you have to be on an adjacent property.
Madam Mayor.
If I could finish?
Oh, yeah, Counselor Dole has the floor. I mean, excuse me, Counselor Mead has the floor.
Thank you. So as I said, I was concerned about the lack of response. So I went out to the West End, and I walked up a street that overlooks this, this old shopping center. It's called Beverly Court. And I knocked on doors, and I talked to citizens who live on that street. And these are people whose kitchens, their kitchen windows look out over this property. Their front porsches look out over this property. And I would say, it was the middle of the day, people are working. But I was able to talk with five people. None of those people were in favor of the zoning. Had this, and I, I'd like to add that had, had this kind of proposed zoning change been made for a North Augusta property like Terry Court, every resident within a mile would have objected vigorously to having self-storage or storage of any kind in their neighborhood. This is, this seems like economic racism, if you, if you want to put it that way. So, so the, it's not that the residents on Beverly Court don't care. The ones that I spoke with didn't understand the letter. They didn't think they had a choice. They didn't recall getting the letter. They didn't understand what the letter meant. They didn't understand what they needed to do about the issue. This is what I heard from these people who live next to this property. The letter that went out says nothing about self-storage or warehousing. It's, it describes the zoning, but it doesn't go into a lot of detail about what that zoning would permit on that property. So, so, so I've, I've asked our planning folks to think about how we might communicate better with folks in the community in a way that satisfies our attorney, but at the same time, provides people with information in non-legally so they can understand these issues and how to respond to them. So, so why aren't those people here tonight? Why, why are those five people who said they didn't like this here tonight? Well, one couldn't leave her child. One worked at night. One didn't drive at night, and she doesn't do email. One has a disabled family member and can't leave the home. Might they have phoned in their concerns? Maybe someday in the future, but not tonight. Some people think that self-storage would be better than what's there now. The current owner of the property has allowed the buildings to deteriorate, and the grass facing West Beverly Street is nearly two feet tall. With that track record, why would the owner maintain the new property any better? Will he clean up the trash left by those who move in and out? Will there be vehicles parked on the property for months and months? Will there be increased police calls in the neighborhood due to the theft, burglary, damages, and suspicious persons? There are other self-storage businesses in the area, and one's been in business on the West End for many years. We've heard from those folks. There are residential properties around that business that are now valued well below similar residential properties in the area. Is it fair that residents around the property should see their home values decline to benefit a property owner who doesn't live in Stanton and who only cares about, cares about his own profits? So this, this zoning does not fit our comprehensive plan, provides no jobs. The proposed zoning is a bad idea. It would gut the neighborhood. It would bring increased traffic 24 hours a day, seven days a week, increase police calls, and do absolutely nothing for the revitalization of the West End. So I will vote not to continue this matter.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
All right. Ms. Mead, nice speech it was, and I appreciate it. Just let me finish, and you'll find out.
Vice Mayor.
I, I appreciate what you said, and I was literally trying to get to the point where we could find every bit of information that we, that could be available. I hear them. I have heard them, and I do agree with them a lot, believe me. And I'll, and I, you're not going to like this, but I do really, really do not like the term economic racism. You're throwing racism around too much. Having said that, Madam Mayor, I would like to withdraw my motion.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Hold on, Counselor Dole. So a point of order from our city attorney.
Yes, as Vice Mayor Robertson made the motion, and he does have the ability to withdraw the motion at this time.
Does Ms. Darby have to withdraw her second?
No, ma'am.
All right.
No.
Just making sure. All right, Counselor Dole.
I move that Council deny the request to rezone 2040 West Beverly Street as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Mead.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, it is important in this that Counselor Dole stated the Planning Commission was the rationale for her motion. And Counselor Dole, if I could ask you, is, is part of your rationale also that this is not currently conformed to the comprehensive plan?
Well, I can list all the reasons why we should be denying this, but, but I certainly concur that it hasn't, it is not compatible with our comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission recognized that. And the people who live out there, or other citizens who care about the West End, don't feel that this is going to revitalize anything.
I just wanted that on the record.
Right. Right, but it does not need to be restated. All right, thank you. We're going to make it through this, guys. All right. My concern is the fact that we just received the Brownsville Grant that we worked for a very long time to obtain for the West End. And you are right, I ran on a platform to help lift the West End up and I will hold true to my word. With that, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance authorizing the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Stanton Baseball Incorporated for the limited use of baseball field in operation of concession rights. Mr. Rosenberg.
This is Carolyn Dole. I just want to point out that we've lost two council members, I believe. Should we maybe take a five-minute break or something?
Why not? Is that the pleasure of the council?
Yes.
Let's take a five-minute break. Thank you, Counselor Dole. Okay, we're back from break. I'd like to thank everyone for your patience. So the next item is Item C, a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance authorizing the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Stanton Baseball Incorporated for the limited use of baseball field in operation of concession rights. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chris Tuttle, the City's Parks and Rec Director, could not be with us this evening. So I will present this item and will be brief. This is the annual arrangement between Stanton Baseball Incorporated and the city for the baseball club's use of the stadium in Gypsy Hill Park for its season in the Valley Baseball League. This has been an ongoing arrangement now since well before my time with the city. And it's, it's an annual arrangement, though last season, VBL did not have its season. So this will be the first time since 2019. It's for a lease term commencing May 15th, 2021 and continuing through August 31st of 2021. Public hearing, public hearing has been noticed in the news leader as required. And you have in your package a proposed ordinance as well as the lease, which is being approved if council adopts the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, Madam Mayor. Would you need a public here?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Another public hearing, all right. I think you guys know the routine. I'm going to hit the gavel and you can speak for or against and then I'll hit the gavel again to close it out. So, and after that, I'll entertain a motion. With that, the public hearing is now open. Anyone? All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Blair. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam.
Counselor Darby.
I move that City Council adopt the ordinance authorizing approval of the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Stanton Baseball Incorporated for the limited use of the baseball field in operation of concession rights beginning May 15th, 2021 and further authorizing the city manager be authorized to execute the lease agreement with such modifications and in final form is approved by the city attorney.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for making you work for your lunch tonight, Mr. Blair. All right, thank you. The next item is an introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget ordinance for the City of Stanton by adding budget amendment number five. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Treer is going to present this item. And before he starts, let me just note that in this instance, the motion that you have will be made after his presentation before the public hearing.
Thank you for the clarification.
Madam Mayor, members of councils, pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to introduce budget amendment number five for FY 2021. Budget amendment number five totals $5,129,104 and does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised and is scheduled for this evening. The breakout includes city portion $838,877. The school portion $4,290,227. Details have been summarized in your packet and were reviewed during this evening's work session. Budget amendment number five includes $195,346 in general fund provision, which includes $124,000 state carryover funds for street maintenance, $32,275 for police recruitment and retained award from the state, $20,000 from the U.S. Marshal Service, $19,500 for grant awards, insurance recoveries, and donations. It also includes $119,000 for CIP appropriations for street paving, $101,000 for Blue Ridge Court services to fund a pre-trial expansion grant, a $1,300 credit in the grant fund, $16,000 water fund for insurance recoveries and a BERSA grant, $3,733,000 to the education fund to capture SRT2 funds, a CIP transfer and additional interest earned on bond funds, $405,000 to the school CIP fund, $44,000 for furniture, $260,000, $362,000 for the high school tennis court project at Montgomery Hall Park, $27,000 for the school cafeteria fund, and $124,000 for the school state operated fund for instructional wages benefits in tutoring. City manager recommends the introduction of this budget as presented, budget amendment as presented, and for council to conduct the public hearing, which is scheduled for this evening.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to introduce an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by adding budget amendment number five totaling $5,129,104 and that council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Holmes has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
No, I'm sorry. Mayor Oaks, we need to have the public here.
Oh. All right, guys, I'm sorry. It's, what time is it? It's a late night. All right, y'all are mixing it up on me. Okay, public hearing first and then the vote. Y'all know the routine. I'm going to bang the gavel. If you want to speak for or against, feel free. I'll bang the gavel again and then that'll close out the public hearing and then we can have the vote. All right, Mr. Blair, you're working hard for that dollar tonight. With that, the public hearing is now open. Nobody? Okay. With that, the public hearing is now closed. Now, we'll call the vote.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You'll be happy to know there are no more public hearings. All right, that takes us to the next item, which is Item E, Appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission Denial of a Certificate of Appropriateness for 636 West Frederick Street Newtown Historic District Roof Replacement. And also F, Appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission Denial of a Certificate of Appropriateness for 650 West Frederick Street Newtown Historic District Roof Replacement. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes will present this item. And to be clear, he's going to present this item and Item F in a single presentation. The properties are under common ownership and the facts related to each matter are essentially the same. So he's going to make a single presentation and then council will need to take separate action on each one of the items.
Got it, thank you. All right, welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. One clarification, these are not under common ownership. These are two separate property owners, but they're, the specifics of the cases are identical. When this came before the Historic Preservation Commission, they were handled as a group because you're going to hear the same comments. Might as well just hear them once instead of twice.
All right.
I'm just going to give a brief summary of what's booked for you tonight and give you a little timeline and then I'm going to hand it off to the experts in this. And that's Frank Strassler, the Director of Historic Stanton Foundation, who reviews and gives recommendations to the Historic Preservation Commission on all applications for COAs. And we also have the Chair of the Stanton Historic Preservation Commission, Denise Brannick here, to explain why the commission voted as they did. Before the council tonight are two appeals of denials of certificate appropriateness by the Historic Preservation Commission. I would note that the two properties are 636 West Frederick Street, which is owned by John and Stacy Kregosi and 650 West Frederick Street by Robert and Leslie Banta. These two properties came to our attention in the planning office by a complaint. We handle violations by complaint only. It's unfortunate in this case that this is an after-the-fact request by the applicants for what they constructed, which they replaced their existing roofs. They, they had the embossed metal shingled roofs and they replaced them with standing seam metal roofs, which is not a like-for-like replacement. So therefore, it does require certificate appropriateness. I would note that in the past couple of years, we have had a influx of people applying for just that because the embossed metal shingles are, are so expensive to replace nowadays. So a lot of people have been applying for standing seam metal roofs, traditional standing seam metal roofs, and they have been approved on a routine basis. Yeah, I'm guessing we've probably had eight or 10 in the past two years. At the, this first came before the commission, let me back up a second. Council has the ability to reverse or affirm the commission's decision in conformity with provisions of the zoning code. That's the important part of that statement is that the decision by this council needs to be done in conformance with the zoning code and the historic guidelines. It's unfortunate that, you know, we try to limit the number of these that come before council because you guys are not the experts on historic preservation. That's the Historic Preservation Commission. If you look at the background of these members, they are all work in the field and are very knowledgeable about this. And it's, and of course, they have meetings every month. They have training sessions. So obviously, council does not have the expertise here, is not expected to. So commission always tries to work with the applicant to try to resolve issues so it doesn't get to this stage. But this first came before the commission in December of 2020. And during that discussion, the commission noted that although traditional standing seam metal roofs are historically and architecturally appropriate for Stanton's historic districts and have been approved as an acceptable alternative to embossed metal shingles, the wide ridge caps that were installed on these two houses deviated significantly from the historic district guidelines. The application was tabled until the January meeting in order to allow the applicants to work with their roofer, which is the same contractor, same roofer to both properties, to explore options to address the modern ridge caps. At the January 26th, 2021 meeting, the roofer was not in attendance. However, the, the applicants noted they had some concerns about modifying their new roof to address the ridge caps and they wanted the roofer to be able to speak directly to the commission. Therefore, the matter was tabled until the February meeting. At the February meeting, the roofer once again failed to attend. And once again, the applicants expressed concerns about trying to fix this roof without completely removing it. They also voiced some concerns about possibly avoiding the warranty if the roof was altered in some manner. Therefore, the commission agreed once again to table the matter until the March meeting. And at the March meeting, the applicant's roofer, James Talloway, was in attendance and he addressed the commission and he explained why the, why the existing roof with the ridge caps couldn't be altered to more closely resemble a traditional folded seam roof. Upon the consideration of the information presented, including the Historic Stanton Foundation's recommendation, the commission acted to deny the requested certificate appropriateness for the replacement roof, noting that the modern roof with ridge caps cannot be corrected to meet the historic guidelines. I will have Frank come up here, Strassler come up here and go over those guidelines and his recommendation. I would note that staff would appreciate the opportunity to address the commission to clarify any issues that may come up during the comments by the applicants, the property owners. This is not a public hearing.
Thank God.
Yes. I, I would note that at the last meeting of the commission, I mentioned that we've had a couple other after-the-fact roof applications come before the commission and there were two that came up since I've been here and those were both denied and after the fact permit. One of those was appealed to council and council upheld the commission's decision on that. One, we caught, I guess you can say fortunately, when only half the roof was done. And the applicant, after getting, not receiving the COA, installed the correct roof. But also in 2016, there was a case where a property owner applied for an after-the-fact COA for a very similar roof with wide ridge caps and that was approved by the commission. I would note that back in 2016, we did have a different set of guidelines. So it wasn't quite as clear as it is now regarding what is a direct replacement and what is appropriate. That's one of the reasons why the city undertook a couple of years ago of revising and updating the guidelines. I'd be glad to take any questions you have right now or after you talk to the experts on this, starting with Frank Strassler.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes at this time?
This is Carolyn Dole. Mr. Rhodes, has, has anyone spoken to this roofer? Because it would be helpful for him to know that this isn't what, what the commission's going to approve. And, you know, I'm not, I don't know if he was the roofer back in, in those earlier cases you talked about, but he clearly was the same roofer for both of these instances.
Well, the, the applicants certainly spoke to him after receiving a notice of violation from the city and he did eventually attend a commission meeting where it was explained to him about what the guidelines allow. Also, it's my understanding that Frank Strassler may have spoken to this roofer also. Now, he certainly said that he is, he has been educated now and he will do it with permits in the future and do it in accordance with our guidelines. with permits in the future and do it in accordance with our guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
I wouldn't note, one thing I forgot to mention is this is an unfortunate circumstance. We do try to notify property owners that they are in a historic district. When property changes, transfers hands, I, we send them a letter saying, welcome to historic district. By the way, go on the city's website and look at the guidelines. Two years ago, when we adopted the new set of guidelines, we sent out notices to over a thousand property owners informing, informing them about the new guidelines and the link for that. We also reached out to contractors that did this type of work, roofs, windows, doors, siding. But we could only go the current zip codes. So the 24401, we notified all those contractors and suppliers of those materials. It's my understanding that this contract should live beyond that area code.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Rodney, can you come here a second? One of most historic homes in the district. Can you tell me, I mean, what's the difference? It's right at Church and Johnson.
Can you describe what you just looked at and then?
Vice Mayor Robertson showed me a picture of another house in the district, in a historic district with wide ridge caps. Without researching that, I do not know the difference as whether or not they installed that prior to the adoption of the historic regulations and guidelines. Whether it was done without anyone's knowledge and approval, I do not know that.
I just, I look, I look at it, is precedent's been set and it's like, today it was fine, tomorrow, uh-uh. It just, it's, I don't know.
Hey, so Mr. Rhodes, you looked at a picture of another house in the historic district that had the same style? Was that it?
Yeah.
From what you could tell without researching it?
That's correct. It showed the wide ridge caps, which do not meet the current guidelines.
Thank you. Counselor Claffey.
Rodney, was this contractor apply for a building permit to do the roof in a timely manner?
No, sir. For a residential roof, no building permit is required. That's something that has changed in the building code over the years, but it's currently not required. The local jurisdiction and the local building official has the authority to require a permit when there are historic districts. The City of Stanton does not.
Mr. Rhodes.
Counselor Darby.
So I'm confused by that because we have these guidelines from historic preservation that citizens have to follow, homeowners have to follow, but then builders don't have to have a permit. It's still an option?
They do not require a building permit. They do require a certificate of appropriateness through the commission. Those are two separate things. Is that clear or?
I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just find it odd, to be honest. It seems like to me that it's, it's heavy on one end and not necessarily on the other. So.
Well, I'll bring up another example that's not regarding historic, but I believe an accessory structure under 256 square feet does not require a building permit. However, it must meet zoning requirements and setbacks. So it's, it's up to the property owner to ensure that they are complying with all of the city code, not just the building code.
Thank you. Great. Any additional questions? Is Frank Strassler?
Frank Strassler.
There you are. You're hiding.
I'll just have one real quick. Is the, is the roofer here? No, no.
That was Counselor Holmes. Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Strassler. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Rodney, you did a fantastic job of outlining everything. I don't think I need to go over all of those details again. I do like to state in these meetings that the commission's review, the review done for them, did establish a finding of fact relevant to the adopted zoning. And that again establishes the basis of information, including location, historic district, view of the features from a public street, and establishes elements relating to the historic character of the property. And the applicable historic district design guidelines were, as adopted by the City of Stanton's, were outlined for the commission. I have way too many notes here and I'm just going to jump through them. Okay? So one of the leading sentences in the guidelines about roofs is that one of the most important elements of a structure, the roof serves as a cover to protect the building from the elements. Its visibility, shape and materials make it one of the most important character defining elements of a historic building, et cetera. And then the guidelines go on to ask that you match your historic roof if it has to be replaced. And that you work within the same materials. The idea is to retain the appearance of the building. Sometimes I'm going to editorialize here. Sometimes I find it frustrating sometimes because the Virginia code requires this to be about appearance. For historic preservation is all about performance too. Does a roof, does a siding, does a window, does the building perform the way it ought to? The nice thing about traditional standing seam metal roofs is that the ones being replaced today are over 100 years old. They have performed quite well with traditional technique. So, and I also gave you reading assignments. I gave you walking assignments. Probably too forward of me, but I wanted to encourage you to get out and see the landscape, see the houses, see the streetscape, and then place the roof within that and then hopefully notice some historic roofs as compared to the new modern product that is being installed. I guess one of the problems here is that I am encouraging you to uphold the Preservation Commission's decision because that is our local zoning and those are our rules. And the commission clearly upheld the guidelines as they are supposed to do. They followed procedure. I guess what's a conundrum to everybody is how I turn around then and told the commission, I think, yeah, go ahead and approve the roofs. And I'm paraphrasing greatly there. The frustration for me as a preservationist and understanding that we want to keep neighborhoods together and we want to keep young families in these neighborhoods, we want, anyway, we want to encourage investment in these neighborhoods. And that the homeowner followed the advice of a professional roofing contractor with a business license concerning permits and approvals. And they did, the homeowners did what they were supposed to do. Yes, they, yes, they should have called the city. They should have read the guidelines. They should have planned a little bit more. They tried to reach out to me. I missed their email. However, it has, as I have outlined for you, a full page, a diatribe from me showing that if a person wants to find specifically contractors, they want to find the information, it is right there. It is right up in front. The City of Stanton does a great job of their website. And once you reach that planning commission page, there are eight instances in the historic preservation section where you can get this information. And on top of that, then you can go to Historic Stanton Foundation's website and receive all the information. Again, paraphrased for you to explain it very clearly. Information is there. It is there in a very modern accessible manner. So again, in this specific situation, I think the homeowners, yet again, just like the, the case on North New Street and others, were led astray by product sales, installer sales, without the best interest of the historic district at hand. The big question is, does the appearance of the ridge caps create a significant impact on the character of the historic district and of the building? And the HPC, the Preservation Commission, does believe there is a loss of architectural character here. And, 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 and from my point of view, I believe that these wide ridge caps and these modern installation products do have a significant impact on the visual character of these buildings. It does not reflect a historic roof. And, and they are selling these wide ridge caps as this big need for ventilation, which the building science people have shown is a way overkill of what's needed for the building. Of course, none of that's in the, in the guidelines. So the commission followed their guidelines and did the, did the proper thing. So I'm going to end there. We're going on and on. And please ask me questions.
Right. Are there any questions? Counselor Holmes.
Frank, are you saying you recommend it? Or?
I'm on two sides of the coin. I think your Preservation Commission has done their job and the issue is, is upholding their decision.
Vice Mayor Robertson. And I'm falling on Frank's other half. I, these, these couples have done, you know, they've done the best at the time that they knew. They got an architect there within, and I pointed out this one literally up on, right across, it's a garage on a different street that has the exact same roof with the, you know, with, with the vent cap. And it's, I mean, it's right there on Church and Johnson. It's one of our most historic.
Might be the same roofer.
Well, it could be, but I mean.
Could I look at that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Strassler is looking at the same picture that Rodney Rose observed earlier. Can you make any comments about that particular roof?
I guess I want to be a little careful when I make comments. That roof was put on many years ago. The ordinance was in place. And it did not have a certificate appropriateness. So there was no review by the commission. The commission did not approve that and would not have approved that. It just never was enforced. And that is a case over and over because the city reacts to complaint basis. If no one complains, projects move forward.
Uh oh. I just, I just hate to see precedent and it's here in the city. It's, but.
You have precedent, it's a whole, my understanding, a whole nother legal issue.
Yeah, I know. I know.
All right. Any other questions? Chairperson, Deneen Brannick, would you like to say a few words? Thank you. Frank Strassler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. The Historic Preservation Commission certainly values your time and consideration and of course, your support of historic preservation in the city. As Mr. Rhodes stated, the HPC considered this application for, at four meetings between December 2020 and March of this year. In all the meetings, we carefully considered the information presented and offered additional time and suggestions for a compromise solution. We try to do that with every applicant that might not meet the guidelines initially. And we certainly encourage people to do research, to talk with Mr. Strassler or if they're using an architect or a contractor to go back to them and work out a comparable compromise solution. And we did that with both of these property owners and to the owner's credit, I will say they were wonderful in trying to explore those options. Frank can certainly testify to that if you, if you need it and we greatly appreciated that. However, in the end, unfortunately, the owners, of course, felt there was no reasonable way to modify the roofs to meet the guidelines and consider a replacement and consider the replacement cost of the, you know, taking a roof off and putting a new one on that would meet the guidelines would be certainly cost prohibitive. And we, as a commission, recognize that. I think that these two cases just typically, unfortunately boil down to several factors. There was an initial breakdown in communication during the beginning of COVID, of the COVID shutdown, when the first applicant or first property owner tried to approach Historic Stanton for information on what they needed to do and what type of roof would have been allowed. And that was terribly unfortunate, but it was the beginning of COVID when things were shutting down and offices weren't open and things were a mess, as we all remember. The owners, of course, at that time felt they needed to act quickly to repair their roofs to prevent extensive damage to their home, which we can all appreciate certainly. And there was the misunderstanding of replacement in kind, which is a term in our guidelines, if you've looked at them, on the part of both the owners as well as the roofer, according to what he told the commission. And unfortunately, that resulted in the fact that they did not follow the application process. So this incident could be caught before the roofs were installed. And, and you know, it could have been prevented. So ultimately, the owners believed they were installing an appropriate roof and truly had the best intentions, according to the way most commission members felt. You know, we met with these people for, you know, four times and talked with them a great deal. And, I mean, I truly believe they, you know, they've, they've invested in their homes and their neighborhood and the historic district of Newtown and they wanted to do what was right. They just didn't get the proper information and the roofer didn't know the proper roof to install. So unfortunately, it was a chain of bad circumstances. All of these factors, of course, resulted in an unfortunate installation of a roof that does not comply with our existing guidelines. So in order to carry out our duty, as Frank and Rodney have both stated, to uphold the historic district guidelines, which is ultimately the Historic Preservation Commission's responsibility. The commission voted to deny the COA for, for the installed roofs. The decision was made to uphold the guidelines and be consistent with reviews of similar roof replacement applications in recent years. We realize there may be some cases that have slipped through, passed past the review process or unfortunate circumstances like this. But our first obligation as a commission is to follow the guidelines. And as you know, the guidelines reinforce the preservation ethic in Stanton, which has, you know, over the past 30 plus years resulted in millions of dollars of investment in our community as well as increased property values. And, you know, just makes this place a wonderful and desirable place that people want to live, work and visit. And of course, that results in tourism dollars. So we, you know, that our goal is to uphold the preservation ordinance and that's what the commission did. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have as well.
Are there any questions? Your Claffey.
Ms. Brannick, was the roof totally completed before the four meetings where they tried to get the roofer there?
Yes.
It was 100% already completed?
Yes, sir. I believe so. The complaint, I believe, came after installation of both roofs.
Counselor Dole.
I was curious whether the, the contract with the roofer, did it state that he was responsible for any permits needed for the project?
I can't answer that question.
Please do.
I'm sorry, excuse me. This is Stacy Fergosie, the homeowner of 636 West Frederick Street. The contract did not specifically state that he was responsible for obtaining any permits and working within the historic guidelines, but we had had verbal discussions with him on several occasions to that point. And we had had a verbal agreement, but it was not put specifically in the contract. No.
Great. Any additional, Counselor Maed? Did you have a follow up, Counselor Dole?
I did. I wanted to comment that you can sue on an oral contract. Just, I've done that successfully, just FYI. But, so I'll pass that along to you guys. But this is, my question, next question is for probably Mr. Blair. If these, these two cases were allowed to stand, would that set a precedent for a contractor to come in and just blatantly, you know, not follow guidelines and then say, well, but, you know, you had, here's, here's examples where I didn't follow it and you allow that. So will it set a precedent?
Well, Counselor Dole, here's what I would say about that. And I know the vice mayor presented a house and we heard tonight that that particular house had never actually been challenged and the question about a precedent came up and now you're, you're talking about that. Legally, what I would tell you about a precedent is this. Precedents in a situation like this, the standard for a city council is, is our decision fairly debatable and is it contrary to law? And so when you talk about a precedent, you have to look at the entire factual. And so when you talk about a precedent, you have to look at the entire factual situation as to what you are doing. One thing that I would point out in your ordinance is section 18.85.0507F. It's a section called undue hardship. And that section reads, the commission shall have the power to reduce or suspend any of the requirements of this chapter if the property presents special circumstances whereby the strict compliance of this chapter will produce an undue hardship. And right there, I would say legally, I haven't heard anything, but then it says, or if the spirit of the chapter has been met and deviation has been deemed to be in the best interest of the city. Now, if that's where you are talking about and what sets a precedent or what doesn't, the council would need to find the facts of this situation and state those facts for the record as to why it would find that undue hardship. You know, I'm not, I certainly am not going to tell anybody which side to take, but if that's where you're leaning, you would need to find some factual situation that's stated tonight that would state, you know, for future cases. We found and issued this certificate of appropriateness for this exact reason, for this exact property. And your factual situation is or isn't the exact same as what we found on May the 13th of 2021?
Does that help councillor Dole?
Maybe not.
I think so.
Well, let me try to, let me try to say this. For precedent, if, for instance, if you had a case right now and there was no factual, you know, you didn't find any specific facts that caught your attention and it was simply somebody just didn't make any effort, just put up a roof and somebody complained, that's one thing. If you find in this situation that the facts, that there was a good faith effort, that COVID or whatever factual predicate you want to put in your decision, that can separate this case from future cases. But again, it's dependent on those facts that you would cite. If that's the direction you're leaning.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
In that case, I would, if there's more discussion, go ahead.
Councillor Mead?
Yes, I, I was wondering for Ms. Brannick or Mr. Strassler, at what point in, in, in the website that guides folks who want to make changes to their homes in our historic district, at what point does it say the applicant must follow, that must have a certificate of appropriateness and that there is an application process that that person must go through? What is that? Is that right up front on the website? Is that buried somewhere? Where does it, where does it start to talk about a certificate of appropriateness?
As many a times as I've looked at that website, I don't have it memorized. But in those eight instances that I outlined, I believe you get to that fairly quickly. Once you go to Planning Commission, then you go under Historic Preservation or Historic Districts. And then it takes you to the page about the Preservation Commission and the process. And three clicks, four clicks.
And then anyone who was present, if you could tell, answer my question about this. When did the homeowners begin that certificate of appropriateness? Begin filling out that form and go through that process?
I can speak to that. We had, we began this process in March of last year because we were having significant flooding inside of our home. And of course, COVID was blowing up at that moment. We, as far as your previous question to Mr. Strassler, in the guidelines, which I did read previous to beginning the roof installation, it says, it said that a certificate of appropriateness is necessary unless you had, or at least this is how we interpreted it, unless you were making an in-kind replacement. And at the time, we truly believed that we were making an in-kind replacement, going metal, from a metal roof to a metal roof. There were other things in the guideline that sort of backed that up. We had reached out, obviously, for more information and didn't, weren't given any follow-through with that. The roof was replaced in May of that year, last year. We received the citation in November. So there was a significant time gap between when the roof installation was complete and when we received the citation. And after we received the citation, did we begin the paperwork for the certificate of appropriateness? Did that answer your question?
Councillor Claffey?
Oh, question. Is there a significant cost difference in the job between doing it the Stanton Historicals way versus the way y'all did?
According to our roofer, there is no difference. And we could have had one roof or the other. We didn't know that there was an option. We were never given an option by that roofer nor by the other three roofers that we got quotes from. We did not know that there was a difference between a traditional standing seam roof and a modern style standing seam roof.
Yes. Hello, this is John Fergosi speaking. To go on with that idea, when we were talking with roofers, every time we brought in a contractor, we were very specifically said, we are within the historic district. We need to make whatever is, whatever we're doing is within the historic district guidelines. We did have some roofers who tried to sell us snaplock roofs, which are corrugated metal and very, and we outright said, absolutely not. They tried to sell us, it was cheaper. We said, absolutely not. We don't care about the cost. We want to make sure it's done right. Not one of those roofers ever said, when we said, we will need a standing seam metal roof, that there was a different, there was multiple kinds. It was not, not one roofer ever had mentioned it. And our idea is that it's probably become so much the industry standard to do this now that they don't even think to even make an offer as to do it to an older kind. And so even though we were trying, we said, we were trying to do all this and we were trying to be as truthful to the historic guidelines as possible. And what we were asking for actually would have been there with the historic district. We weren't given any options. We weren't told that, oh, what we're giving you is the modern style. It just was something that was just left completely unsaid. If we were given that option, we would have definitely said, yes, we want the most traditional roof that we can give us.
And, and once the roof was put on, we could see the wide ridge caps. But to your point, sir, we, we did not think that that was necessarily out of place because we could look around and see other homes that had that same style of roof.
In fact, I mean, the same style roof is on Trinity Church right now.
Right. Vice Mayor Robertson?
And Mr. Fergosi, and please forgive me for this question because I don't like asking it, but if you were to have to take that roof off and put the other one on, what kind of cost do we look?
The original roof, the roof that we replaced was $25,000 and it would be similar. It would be the commiserate price to replace the roof. So then it would become a $50,000 roof. And if you're looking for hardship, I mean, we have a daughter that's graduating this weekend. That's most of her college money.
Councillor Holmes?
Would y'all be willing to sue the roofer? Or have you heard anything from him?
We had, we heard, it was a bit of a frustrating process while we, I'm sorry if you wanted to. There was a bit of a frustrating process at once the certificate of appropriateness meetings began. Like it was reported, there were three meetings consecutively that he did not attend. All three of these meetings, we were told that he would attend. He did come to the fourth meeting. He also met with us prior to the fourth meeting. At, when we spoke with him at that fourth meeting, I, you know, I do believe that, I'm pretty sure I believe that he felt that the roof that he put on was appropriate. I, I have to believe that.
We also did, at one point, we contacted a lawyer asking about this very thing. And they said, although they weren't specifically with the contract law, if we had put it, if they, we have a contract for them to put on a roof and they put on that roof, it could very well be construed. Well, they did what you asked them to do.
And because to Ms. Dole's point, it was not specifically outlined in the contract.
And as far as also like the idea of suing, there comes the point, is it going to cost more to sue the roofer than replacing the roof outright, once we start getting into a whole legal battle? And that's something we would have to be looking into as well with all of those.
It has been discussed.
Right. I have a question for councillor person, Denise Brannick. You mentioned, number one, didn't get information due to COVID. Is this the email that was mentioned earlier that apparently was never received?
Yes, that was what Mr. Strassler referred to. And I think it was truly just the fact that things were beginning to shut down and, you know, everyone's offices were closing or not open on normal hours. And, you know, somehow it just slipped through the cracks, unfortunately.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Robertson?
I'd like to make a motion in light of the perfect storm happening per se, COVID hitting, wanting to get the roof on before water damage, making a good faith effort, it seems. Wanting to have young couples come in and restore our homes and, and not put undue hardship on them. And also following Mr. Strassler's left hand or right hand, I'm not sure which one it was. I would like to move the council reverse the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission and approve the certificate of appropriateness as requested by the applicants on 636 West Frederick and 650 West Frederick permitting the roof as installed.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Darby?
I second that.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just Carolyn Dole.
Councilman Holmes? Councillor Dole?
Mr. Blair, does that motion include enough information to not set a precedent?
Well, I would like.
Because I would, I could happily amend it.
I was wondering if, if Vice Mayor Robertson, would you be willing to have a friendly amendment from
Absolutely.
if she wants to add additional factual?
Absolutely. Carolyn, please go ahead.
I would like to amend the previous motion to include factors such as communication delays due to the COVID pandemic and good faith on the owner's part to have the contractor follow the historic guidelines in oral conversations. And I can't read, I can't read the rest of it. The undue hardship to replace or repair the new roof to have it comply with historic guidelines.
I gladly accept that.
Yes. And if, if somebody could also state they believe that the spirit of the chapter has been met.
I will make the motion that the spirit of the chapter has been met.
You've added that to your motion.
Yes, to my motion and amended.
All right. So we have an amended motion by councillor Dole. Do we have a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Darby?
I will second councillor Dole's amended motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Councillor Holmes?
I would just like to say that the Historic Preservation Commission goes out of their way to really do the right thing. And for them, it's black and white. They don't have no gray area. And, and I mean, I know y'all know that they really tried to work with you as every way they could. You know, I just worry about setting precedents because this is the second time we've overturned the commission on, since this council's been together. And I just, I just worry that we're going to do things that's going to undermine the commission as a whole.
And I just want to say, we've been homeowners since 1999 in this same home in the historic district. We truly believe in the mission of the historic district. And we did truly believe that we were trying to meet those guidelines. We don't in any way want to set, make things more difficult for the.
I have no doubt of that because I've been there when y'all been at the meetings.
And please don't.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, I'm not trying to, you know, come down on you. I really, I know you're doing your job. I just, it just seems like everything has been, just, like I said, everything's fallen through the cracks on this one. And, and I mean, please, I'm not trying to come down on the historic commission, please.
And we certainly appreciate the expertise of the historic commission. So thank you for everything that all of you do for the historic district of Stanton. All right. With that, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item F. We've already had a report from Rodney Rhodes.
Madam Mayor, actually, I think the vice mayor's motion included both property addresses, sir.
No, I was, okay, all right. You're right. You're right. All right. Long night. My apologies. All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Right. Very efficient, Vice Mayor Robertson. Yes.
Just the simple fact that the other homeowners are still right there. Should we just ask them if they have anything they want to say, since they did not speak?
If they would like. I mean, we've already passed it. They might want to run. So.
They look fine. They're.
Yeah, I think they're not gonna. Yeah, they're not going to buck anything. So, all right. The next items matters from the city manager.
Madam Mayor, just briefly, two items to share with you. First, I want to make council aware and will be issuing some public communications about this in the next day or so, that Public Works has received an award from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water for the manner in which the water treatment plant is operated in years past. In fact, for each of the previous 16 years, the water treatment plant operation has been recognized by the Virginia Department of Health at bronze and silver levels, but will be announcing an award to recognize in the water treatment plant for achieving a gold level status, which is, and so you start out with, you know, what the law requires. And then if you do more than the law requires, you get bronze. You do a little bit more, you get silver and you, then you really knock it out of the park, you get gold. And so the, the staff there has done a tremendous job and has achieved this gold level status, which again, will share with the public more broadly in the next day or so. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you is just to elaborate a little bit on the mayor's remarks earlier about the Brownfields Assessment Grants from the EPA. It is a $300,000 grant and there are different types of grants from the EPA. This is what's referred to as a community-wide assessment grant. And its purpose is to assess sites contaminated by hazardous substances, pollutants, contaminants and petroleum. And so as I mentioned earlier, these funds are going to be used to conduct environmental site assessments of properties on the West End. There are 10 Phase 1 assessments that will be conducted and three Phase 2 assessments that will be conducted. So the Phase 1 assessment is, you know, at a lower level and a Phase 2 assessment is more involved and it's typically undertaken where there's a reason to believe that a property actually has environmental contamination present at the time that the assessment is conducted. So 10 Phase 1, three Phase 2, some specific properties that have already been identified include the former Unified Manufacturing Site, the Chestnut Hills Shopping Center, the Nabisco Warehouse. the Nabisco Warehouse, and the Rose Time Scrap and Metal Recycling Facility. And so those, and the purpose of these assessments is to get a sense of the conditions of these properties, these that I've specifically identified, as well as others that will be identified, to identify their condition, which is the first step in undertaking some sort of successful redevelopment of those properties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the next item, you guys hang in there, I know everybody's probably getting sleepy, uh, matters from the public. Matters from the public, this part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters From the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium, identify yourself, complete your remarks within five minutes, I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time, I will let you know that your time has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium. If you continue to speak after, I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will ask you again to please stop, please stop speaking and step away from the podium. If you still continue to speak, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section eighteen point two dash four one five A two. Number two, this is a time for us as a council simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you seek information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Number three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to identify employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, email, or mail. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Number four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous, using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their duties on behalf of the City of Stanton, and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our interim clerk of council, Ms. Smith. And now we welcome all speakers, the podium is now available for matters from the public. Right, welcome.
Good evening again, um, my name is Ingrid Blanton, I am at two seventeen North Madison Street, and I actually came here this evening, as you know, to comment on the rezoning request. However, the, um, decision of this council to overturn the HPC compels me to once again step up to the podium. As a matter of full disclosure, uh, my husband does sit on that commission, however, I'm here in my individual capacity and more importantly, as a homeowner in the Newtown Historic District. So I, I'd like to make a couple of comments here, is that the historic guidelines are, you know, what have made this town what it is. And as you've heard, it is the HPC's role to uphold those guidelines, and that is indeed what they did. As Councilman Holmes commented earlier, that there have been a couple of occasions now where this council has overridden the HPC. I would just say that every single time you do that, because it is quite a group of accomplished and knowledgeable people, you undermine them. Secondly, as a matter of fundamental fairness, and as, as I said, a historic district homeowner who completely renovated a home, um, and followed every single part of this process, I think we do need to talk about fundamental fairness and good faith. Good faith is actually going through the entire process. And what we saw here are two instances where that was not done. An application, even, you should be safe rather than sorry in such situations, and initial application was not even completed. So when you want to think about good faith, I hope what you'll do is think about how fair these kind of decisions are to the many people who take considerable effort, time, and expense to follow these guidelines. So, um, you know, I think it goes without saying that I'm very disappointed in this decision, I'm very disappointed in the, to the extent to which these kind of decisions undermine the HPC and really, um, undo the fabric of a great community. So thank you again for your time this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Once again, Joanne Tigert, nine thirteen North Augusta Street. I'm disappointed about not changing the, uh, call-in situation for, uh, city council meetings. Senator Kane was here recently, and from what I've read in the news leader, he spoke to you all about how that is not a good decision, possibly against, um, Americans with Disabilities Act laws. And also, um, I read that you all received a letter from the Virginia ACLU, as well as a couple of other organizations, um, concerning that same field. It seems to me as that is something hopefully you all will remedy in the near future. My last comment, I'm trying to stay brief, it's very late, is respect. I think everyone here, everyone there, needs to have respect for each other. And I've witnessed, I've been to two or three meetings this, in the recent past, and I've noticed, I'm not gonna say where, but I've noticed among the city councillors, a bit of disrespect for others in that some that can't see the people, I guess I'll say behind them, because that's the only way to put it. When, uh, um, when someone is speaking, there are other councillors that are talking amongst themselves to each other, and that's, you can't listen to someone who is speaking if you're talking behind them. And I just think that shows a lack of listening, first of all, and a lack of respect. So I hope you all will keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Cindy Connors, I live at one oh six Skyline Avenue. I was here at the April eighth meeting when we, uh, excuse me, the city council, uh, voted to cease the phone access for citizens for public hearings and, uh, matters from the public. And, um, I spoke to the fact that a comment was made that when citizens email, they get answered and it's, it's a similar thing or equivalent or fair enough that we can do that if we can't physically come to the meeting. I, I spoke that I hadn't been receiving, um, any response from the mayor. Subsequently, I have corresponded by email for the mayor and I've gotten some answers, so I want to thank you for that. But, uh, on specifically on one of them, uh, was about the recycling program, I asked a question about what are the parameters to decide whether the test, this pilot program is successful or not? Because I mean, one of the answers to my question about the recycling program was that it was potentially temporary pilot program, et cetera, but, um, I wanted to know, you know, what, what's the report card? Um, and then you, then, uh, excuse me, the mayor answered that I would hear from the city manager, but I did not, so I just wanted to let you know that I haven't heard that and I would like follow-up, thank you. But I'm also here to say, I very much appreciate that correspondence and I look forward to hearing from the city manager, but it isn't the same thing either, because when I email, the other citizens don't get, don't hear, get to hear me. Tonight, we witnessed a very long public hearing about the Big Lots property, and I had an opinion, but I also learned a lot from the other people that spoke at the microphone. And sometimes, though, people can't come. So we have the modern technology, it exists already, um, we used it, it's not new fangled, Zoom's not new anymore, I've been zooming for a year and a half now, and, um, I think we all know how to use it, to Zoom it, we know how to use the telephone, we have the capability. I want to hear from the other citizens too, including the ones that can't come down here. So, um, I'm asking again that you reconsider and open up that people can return to being able to have virtual access to the public hearings and the matters from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
It's Narduzzi, South Jefferson Street, you know why I'm here. I've sent you emails weeks ago about taking away my privilege to call in to city council meetings to speak during matters from the public. I've shared with you vulnerably what my disability looks like for me, what it feels like for me, and how your choices have affected me. And I am sorry to say, I did not hear a single word from the majority of council and no one answered some of the direct, direct questions that I had. So I'm just going to share with you some portions of that email that I sent to you, um, just to reiterate that, so that I know that you actually do hear me and hear me now. On a side note, I just want to let you know that in my inbox is an email from the ACLU and the other lawyers that have already reached out to you to warn you about the choices that you are making to silence my voice. Fighting to have my voice heard is not new to me. As someone from the disability community, I have spent years lobbying for legislative reforms that would honor patients' right to life-saving medicine. I have traveled with other advocates to our nation's capital to be a voice for thousands of disenfranchised members of our society who could not participate in the democratic process due to being housebound, bedridden, hospitalized, imprisoned, disabled, or just too darn busy trying to survive their daily struggles living in poverty to find the capacity to pu, to fight for their own political well-being. You see, all policies have the potential to become political when consensus cannot be found, and political policies always harm someone. Council must be reminded that it is great disservice to populations already marginalized when you ignore the lived experiences of those whose voices continue to go unheard. So I'm here tonight to explain to you again, in vulnerable detail, how my lived experience continues to be negatively and unduly affected by the willful apathy of my own city council. While COVID exposed our whole world to the kind of suffering that is born from isolation, some of us that had already been living on the margins found great comfort from and increased connectivity to our community through rapidly evolving technology that allowed us to engage more and more with less and less demands on our limited energy. Since January, I've been part of a collective effort to livestream meetings to an open platform so that citizens can engage with each other. Through this process, we have learned how to share important PowerPoint presentations, previously only visible to council members and city staff. We received help from Virginia Relay to offer open captions for citizens with hearing impairments to utilize. We dedicated our time and efforts to researching and exploring how the modernization of technology and our city's unique opportunity to use CARES Act funding could actually be one of the few positive outcomes of how we all may begin to operate in a post-COVID world. When council decided to abruptly and unnecessarily dismantle the platforms that I rely on to engage with my community in the same ways that other able-bodied community members do, I was grieved. You see, through my advocacy for my community, I've been able to make new connections, develop deepening relationships, collaborate on equitable solutions on a diverse range of issues, educate myself on what matters most to my neighbors, and challenge myself to speak truth to power so that local systems that foster greed and oppression can no longer operate without being held accountable. These lived experiences are, to me, the essence of democracy and the sovereignty of individual liberties, both of which I hold in highest regard for tenants of good and fair governance. These were principles that I was exposed to as a child growing up in a conservative, Christian, Republican community. But these are not the principles that I witnessed being prioritized by a majority of our council members. To intimately know what, according to Counselor Claffey's Facebook page, was an intentional suppression of my voice, in order to know what that feels like to me, you would also have to feel it in your body, feel how the trauma of isolation and an ever progressing disease can drain a person of all hope and joy and peace. But those are not aspects of my personal struggle that I should be required to share with you in order to establish my place in this world, in this community, in this work that I have been called to do, to pursue justice in all things for all people. I should not have to offer up details about my physical, mental, or emotional health as evidence of how normative structures disenfranchise voices from our disability community, how your rules of engagement and your elite policies marginalize me, and how your allegiance to certain traditions diminishes opportunities for valuable change and progress that would benefit our whole community. But I share these things with you in hopes that it will help you to understand just how difficult, yet necessary, it is for me and for others to keep showing up for our community in ways that bind us to our collective well-being and commit us to our collective care.
You're right. Thank you. Um, and I would just remind everyone to please, um, keep your comments to the council as a whole. All right, anyone else? Welcome.
Allison Profeta, Faria Court in Stanton. This evening I have for you a petition that was circulated online and signed by almost four hundred concerned community members, asking you to do the right thing, the opposite of what you did tonight when you voted to not allow temporary remote participation while you drag on the debate over it. Specifically, we demand full usage of and transparent accounting for the two hundred thousand dollars in CARES Act funding earmarked by staff and city council for council chambers' modernization. Allow people to engage in public hearings and matters from the public through the use of telephone or other remote technology. Allow citizens to view livestream video and audio, including all presentation materials, and using closed captions. Honor the First Amendment rights of citizens and reject any attempts to obstruct dissenting voices. Foster inclusive civic engagement through government processes, practices, and decisions that are more responsive to community priorities. Welcome relationships and effective communication with citizens and engage with all of the diverse voices that make up our Stanton community. I also hope you all come to recognize that silence is a statement in and of itself. Your silence speaks volumes, and every time you remain silent or talk around an issue, refusing to make a declarative public statement, you leave the community no choice but to interpret that silence as a statement, one of agreement. Meeting after meeting, you are all quite vocal about the things you don't like or disagree with. Mayor Oaks has complained about Councilmember Dole's Zoom screen. Councilmember Darby has complained about alleged threats of violence made towards your July first organizational meeting, proof of which she still hasn't produced. Councilmember Claffey has complained about having to listen to citizen complaints.
Please, please keep your comments to the council as a whole.
I am, I'm giving you examples.
Please, please give, um, your comments as the council as a whole.
So do you want me to attribute these examples to?
Based off of the, um, the guidelines?
Councilmembers whose names rhymed with schmull, schmead, and schmoams have complained about councils refusal to address equity issues, and just this evening, the council member whose name rhymes with Schmaberson complained about discussing racism too much. These are just some examples, I assure everyone there are more. The silence of certain council members, as well as that of city staff, in the wake of Councilmember whose name rhymes with Schmaffey's official statement, which is still live on his official Facebook page, is a statement, one that upholds claims that, quote, embarrassing displays of pettiness, and, quote, constant negative views, and his interest in only hearing, quote, positive suggestions are why he voted to end our ability to utilize remote means of participation. His statement was deemed constitutionally impermissible by attorneys, experts from three different watchdog organizations in a letter sent to council, a letter that very suddenly broke council's silence. I will forever remain in awe of how quickly you began publicly downplaying the stance the four of you took on this issue immediately after the city received the letter. However, your continued silence on one guy's statement is a statement, and until city council or city staff say otherwise, your tacit statement of approval remains. The mayor accused the news leader of, quote, putting words in my mouth in an email we can now view thanks, thanks to a FOIA request. Aside from being simply untrue, I'll say again that silence speaks loud and clear. I do hope at least that that person's supporters are aware that privately. I do hope at least that that person's supporters are aware that privately, at least in one email anyway, she did finally, quote, condemn the violent riots. Who wouldn't, she asked? Well, a lot of her supporters wouldn't and won't, and I'm guessing that's the real reason why she still hasn't said those words out loud in public and why we'll continue to witness council members relying on silence as their statements. I came here this evening to let you know that we hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. I will ask again if the public would please address the council as a whole. According to the rules under Matters from the Public, thank you. Yes, welcome.
Hello, I'm Danielle Craig. I'm basically moving back to the city, and I just wanted to at least say that I'm very proud of all the people that were here that spoke today, and at least who care about our great city of Stanton. I did grow up here as a child, so I don't want to call anybody out by name, because you do not want to be called out by name, even though you guys want us to call ourselves out by name for record and give your addresses. That is fantastic. But as a citizen who is actually coming back to this city, and my first time watching a city council of people who I have worked with, I have grown up with, and who've taught me how to be a respectful citizen of this community, I am ashamed to watch you guys roll your eyes and laugh and have side jokes about us, who are the concerned citizens of this area. You, right now, keep wanting to point fingers, roll your eyes, and give us looks. These people have disabilities. I have been personally kicked out of employment places around here because of policies and rules and regulations that do not apply by all of our citizens of this city, of this nation, of any of this. I just want to make sure that all these people's voices were heard, and that you guys should take it into a little more consideration without the eye rolls. Because these people deserve your respect just as much as we need to respect you and your level of power. I did not actually come here to speak, but I really am appalled at that blatant disrespect towards your own citizens tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you. Mark Jeter, Sunnyside Street here in Stanton. I also did not intend to speak, but I was down here because in case I didn't want to speak, I couldn't put my daughter to sleep tonight. My wife had to take care of that. So thank you for making me down, be down here and break up that family unit at a night to be able to put her to sleep when I could have been listening and possibly call in. But the reason I want to speak right now is because I had actually had a question about when we call out members of council by name because of actions they've done, whether it be on their Facebook candidate page, or council page, or actions they've taken, or emails they've written. I went up to the city attorney, which you all hired recently, and asked him about this clarification, and he did say that we can say what you've done in your office, not a personal attack, but we can say those things. So in your words, Mayor, please refer to council. I would trust his word. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, hearing none, I appreciate, oh, sorry, I thought you were leaving.
No, no, Julie Schofield, Lake Avenue here in Stanton. I just want to join the chorus of folks who have come out here tonight and ask you to please reconsider making Matters from the Public available remotely as soon as possible. I think you've heard many reasons why the petition will lay them out in great detail, but it really, when it comes down to it, for my purposes, comes down to good and open and transparent government. You have the capabilities, we have the technology. We've been able throughout COVID to learn how to use these technologies, to make the phone calls, to feel like we're able to participate. Why take it away from us now? I really have felt more engaged with the city council, being able to listen and call while still continuing to read to my child, or finish my dishes, or whatever it is that I want to do, but to engage with the city council around issues, to come in person if I feel compelled to, but to also be able to participate from the comfort of my own home. And so I really want to join those that you've heard from, and the 400 or how many folks who have signed that petition, and ask you to reconsider this as soon as possible. It's really just a matter of good, open, transparent government, and I think it's time for us to move into the future and use these technologies that are available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. I'm sure everybody's tired, so get a good night's sleep, and with that, this meeting is now adjourned.